Start the meeting, I will unpause the recording, so we are now recording. And we are live, okay, so. Welcome everybody to tonight's Lunenburg Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, March 30th, 2021. Start with my usual preamble. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. Town of Lunenburg in response to the COVID-19 pandemic is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent its spread. All town facilities are open to the public during limited hours and by appointment outside those hours. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law chapter 30A, section 20. All public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable on Facebook Live and on the public access Facebook page and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after its conclusion. If you would like to join this meeting and participate in this meeting and you have a smartphone, a computer or a tablet. You just need to use the Zoom application and tonight's webinar ID is 9091740347. If you would like to participate but do not have any of those devices or choose to dial in by phone, you can do so by dialing 888-475-4499. And once again, the webinar ID is 9091740347. If you're using the application, please acquaint yourself with the raise your hand feature. On most of the applications, it's under reactions. And if you are on the phone and dialing in, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. And the host, that would be me, can see that you've raised your hand and will call on you to speak at the appropriate time. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and all those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions and not all items listed may in fact be discussed. While other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I will do a roll call vote to order here and call people in the order I see them, so Ms. Adams. Mr. Dwyer. Mr. Marino.
Here.
Mr. Jeffries.
Here.
I am here. We also have the Madam Town Manager, are you here?
Here.
Okay, I will hand it over to the leader of our pledge of allegiance during these Zoom meetings, Ms. Adams. It's all yours.
Alright, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comment from the public this evening? Do that. And we do, Mr. Rossi. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hi, yes. So I, hi, I am Ethan Rossi at 750 Northwood Lunenburg. I am 16 years old. I attend court at Lemburgh South Family Marshall Art Center in Leominster, Mass. I have been a student there for four and a half years and have recently become a Black Belt candidate. And as part of becoming a Black Belt, I need a community service project allowing to introduce Operation Caring for Kids. I am a leukemia survivor myself and throughout, and throughout my life, I had a lot of experience in the hospital. And let's just say, as a kid, they can get kind of boring. Well, it's time to change that. I'd like to ask you, my community, to help me with Operation Caring for Kids and putting together little fun and entertaining bags and kits for all the sick and ill kids at UMass in Worcester. Their need is for you to help in buying supplies for the kids. We have put together a very specific list of items we need. We ask that only items from that list may be purchased and donated. You can learn more by visiting my Facebook page at HTTPS, colon, facebook.com/caringforkids. And that is caring with a K. The number four, then, then kids, the number under 21 altogether. We have, we have shared an Amazon wishlist you can use to purchase the specific items. The drop off spot will be at the Boys and Girls Club located at 15 Memorial Drive in Lunenburg, Mass. Between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank them for being willing to help me out. We will hopefully have a bin available by Monday, April 5th. Thank you for, thank you for your time and thank you for your help. I am hoping you'll join me in Operation Caring for Kids. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Ethan. Before you go, that website that you gave, do you see in the application where it says chat?
Yes.
Can you chat what the, the entire URL you read and then we could make it available to people too? I think it's a great, great project and I look forward to the town and myself helping you out with it.
Thank you.
Ms. Adams.
Sure, I just wanted to respond to Ethan too and thank him for his public comment. I met his parents through public commenting a few years back and then became Facebook friends because of that. And Ethan and his entire family are a very inspirational family in town. And so it was nice to have you here tonight.
Yes, you know, for, for someone, for any time the youth gets in front of the board of selectmen, it can be very intimidating, whether it's on Zoom or it's in person and when that happens and people do so well, I really appreciate their time and their efforts before then. You know, there's been like the Skateboard Park group that has been a great group too. And I appreciate Ethan coming forward and, and I know we've had Eagle Scout troops before us too for similar kind of community service projects. So I want to thank them and I wish you the best of luck, Ethan. In the town really pitching in, thank you for putting in, in the, in the chat, your, your website. And we will make sure we publicize it. Okay. Any other public comment from the public? Any public comment from the board this evening? Ms. Adams.
I'm sure. I have something written down to go over in action items, but I'll make it as a board comment. Just because there's maybe more resources here at the front end of the meeting. Um, I've asked a question a few different times with different questions regarding water district. But I have a question or a comment in, in terms of just our role as selectmen and as municipality as it relates to the ownership of the roads. I mean, one grand titles bestowed upon the selectmen or select board are the stewards of the roads. Um, and that being a part of the role, I want to better understand, and if you could direct me either from the DPW perspective or from the town manager, where the ownership of roads comes into play when utilities are digging. I know when Unitil wants to remove trees, they have to come before us. And so I just want to better understand as we move forward the interface with the fact that we are owners of the road that, that will be used by, you know, potential water projects. Thank you.
Anybody want to take a?
I think we have a great opportunity because the DPW director is here tonight at these.
Alright, so let's go.
We don't want to put him on the spot.
Not too late, I'm putting him on the spot.
That's a great question. And Adam, I'm not sure I have a 100% clear answer on that. I would imagine that customarily, any project that requires water that the water district is, is looking at will come through my office for at least cursory approval, given, you know, review the project, the impacts to the roads and traffic and safety. From that end, you're right, I mean, the selectmen could, I would imagine a project should be presented to the select board for at least approval as well. I, I wouldn't say the DPW's approval of a project that wants to install water would be final. To that end, I don't know exactly what role the select board plays. I don't believe there's necessarily a permit that would need to be requested or you know, gained approval from through the select board. So again, as I said, I'm not sure 100% what the answer is to that. It might be a good question to our, our legal counsel. But my expectation would be, you know, any project that's extending a water main on one of Lunenburg's public ways is going to come to the DPW for approval.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you for that. It's, when you first learn, you know, your roles and responsibility, you almost, you know, think, oh, road stewardship, you know, what, what, how will that be relevant? And it keeps surfacing in my mind in regards to this particular issue because other seek, you know, seek communication with the select board regarding the fact that we are the actual owners, you know, the town, under the stewardship of the selectmen of that space. And it doesn't seem to be joining the conversation. And I've, I've tried to, tried to, you know, connect those dots in, in just a very proactive way. So thank you for your input and maybe we can run it through town council and see what our ownership of the road plays, you know, in the overall decision-making process.
Okay, any other public comment from the board? Seeing none. Announcement, so just to fill in to the best of my knowledge, nothing has changed since town caucus. So the four, the five seats that were empty or vacant, meaning that board of health member for three years, assessor for three years, assessor for one year, school committee member for three years and commissioner of trust funds for three years, those all remain vacant. That nobody's running, anybody who's interested in running those at this point, it is too late to be on the ballot. So you can only write, run, write in campaign for that or any other seat. So just to be, if you are interested in such thing, that's the only available venue or, or avenue at this point. Hopefully we'll get people for those seats. Okay. Appointment, 7:05, mostly on time. An update from the DPW director regarding drainage at 225 Pleasant Street.
Mr. Oliver. Sure, thanks. Shortly after I came on board with the town, a property owner on Pleasant Street contacted me about an ongoing drainage issue on his property. As a result from a culvert, a storm drain that empties onto a town-owned piece of property adjacent to his own. My predecessor had worked with him somewhat on this problem. I don't think a final resolution was ever come to. So I spoke with Heather and that's why I'm here tonight. As I said, the, the, this drain empties out onto the town parcel adjacent to Mr. Walker's property. And essentially what I'd like to do is just to extend the culvert, not the culvert, the swell rather, that this culvert empties into on town property. Basically get it far enough around the end of his property. So he no longer sees the result of the water draining right next to his property. Essentially what's happening is it's, it's causing some erosion on his property. And, and if we extend this swell to direct the runoff further out and away from his property, it, it should eliminate the problem. So essentially being that the property is listed as a select board property rather than say a conservation commission property. I thought it best that I, I speak to the board before doing that and just, you know, understand what's going on and what I'd like to do and, and help out and, and solve this problem for, for our neighbor.
Is it a simple fix, I'm assuming?
Yeah, it's just extending an existing swell towards the back of his property and just around it so that the, the stormwater, the runoff stays on basically on town property rather than ending up on his.
Okay. That sounds reasonable to me. Mr. Walker, you can indicate if you would like to speak to this at all or if not, it's no requirement. I will allow you the opportunity.
Thank you. I met with Mr. Oliver. He looked at the work that had already been done, which was partial under Jack and was gracious and talked to me and we discussed a way of doing it. But he does need the approval. I would also appreciate if there's a way of doing it. The town providing some topsoil to restore the drainage areas. Which if they can provide it, I'm happy to deal with putting it into all the areas that have eroded. Thank you.
I think we can accommodate that.
That was my next question. Thank you for being proactive and answering before I asked.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Oliver, our DPW director, or anything about this project?
Yeah, I have a question. In our packet on our drive tonight, there's a, there's a map of the property. Which number is Mr. Walker's property?
My, my property is, 227 is the road number. And it's to the east of the map that you have there. It's the yellow shaded property. Assuming you have the same presentation I'm holding. And 20, the parcel labeled 25, I believe is 223. And between the two is the town property to get through to the 40 acres of conservation land at the back.
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Town Manager.
The part, the package that the board has on the second page is the map with the shaded, is that what you're referring to, Selectman Jeffries?
Yes.
Twenty, number 26 is the town parcel. Number 27 is Mr. Walker's.
And approximately how much topsoil, Mr. Walker, are you looking for?
Not an expert, but I assume one large truckload. There's quite a lot of erosion gone, gone on over the past four years. But whatever it is, we'll work with it. I'll work with Mr. Oliver.
Thank you.
With 40 acres, I think you should find enough place to put the water, I would imagine. Okay. Problem reported, problem on the way to being solved. So you will report back to us, Mr. Oliver, when it is resolved?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Oliver goes, could we just hear from him a little bit later in the meeting, we're going to hear about the budget and capital plan. And there's a capital plan project that is DPW related for a DPW vehicle that I'll go over. But if you have specific questions for him that need to be answered?
Sure, if you want to present that part, we can use his time wisely.
Yeah, I'll just focus on that one project that was added to the plan. So it's four three-quarter ton pickup truck with plow for $4,000. It was initially not in the 13 projects was added when additional funding became available. So that project in Marshall Park were added to the plan. So the vehicle self is for the fleet vehicles. And as I understand it, the priority became more immediate because we're restoring some vacant positions. So if you have any other questions for the DPW director?
Is it, I have one, is it the intention for this vehicle to remain at town property after hours or does this vehicle go home with employees?
The DPW director, if any vehicle driven by him goes home with him.
And will this vehicle? Will this vehicle be driven by Mr. Oliver?
I believe this vehicle will be. Is that correct?
Yes. And the one that you are, are you currently driving one?
Yes, I am. What I'm currently, so what I'm currently driving now is a one-ton pickup truck with a utility body on it, which is basically cabinets, you know, in place of the bedsides. Which was originally driven by the assistant facilities person who, whose position is not currently filled and we're looking to restore. So the, the vehicle I'm currently driving doesn't make a lot of sense for me to drive. And, and if that position is approved this spring and we move forward and hire someone for it, that truck is going to go back to that person. That's what it's intended for. In, in the course of filling open positions that have been open for some time. And also I'm looking to create seasonal positions for the cemetery department. We're seeing a shortage of vehicles. At some point I'm going to have more bodies than vehicles for daily tasks. So, so this is essentially what's driving this. You know, if things don't pan out and, and the vehicle doesn't get approved, I'll continue driving what I'm driving, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for me to do so. So that, that's what's really driving this request.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of follow-ups. Is it, I mean, I'm a little bit new to the idea of town department heads or employees taking vehicles home. Although I do know that I think the fire department does that. Out of curiosity, I mean, I guess there's two questions here. The first is what's, if, if you can just inform me what's the necessity of this policy that we have here? And then my secondary question is, if the necessity is so that the DPW, in this case director, can respond to emergencies quickly after hours, I think I have a question of, since you've been on board, how many times you've needed to respond to emergencies after hours?
Okay, that would be the general take is that I'm basically on call 24 hours, seven days a week, all year long. I haven't responded to an emergency after hours since I've been here. Generally, I confer with my foreman who decides, you know, if an emergency requires after-hours attention from my department. We haven't had a, an emergency that met that requirement. Part of it is also to the need for a, a truck, obviously four-wheel drive to get through the weather, but we also plow with it. I do some plowing. It's available to my staff if, if, if someone's without a plow. It's there for plowing. So, but the after-hours part of it is basically for responding to emergencies.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marino.
My, my opinion and my, I don't, I don't like to sound condescending when I say this, but sometimes I do and I apologize ahead of time. I had that in my contract. I had personal use for my vehicle, my contract, and I believe the fire chief does. And if Rob doesn't, then when his contract comes up, we should discuss that. Because I don't care if he has to come to work once at 3 o'clock in the morning, he needs to be here and on call. So that's the purpose of that. And furthermore, from when Jack left, the truck he left Rob was in very, very bad shape. And I believe somewhere in the chain here, that's one of the ones that'll be replaced. He needs a truck and I'll stand behind that 100%. And as I said, when the time comes, if he doesn't have it in his contract, he should.
Any other questions for the DPW director? As a member of the capital planning committee, we, we voted to approve this unanimously just before this meeting this evening. So we are aware of this. This was in the priority list of that was set well before we knew it would be funded to this, to this depth. And we're very, actually very happy that we have the cash to fund these extra two items, this being one of them. And the other one, which we will talk about later, is the Marshall Park master plan. So I also support it.
Mr. Mag, yeah. Chairman, I'm still in court.
Mr. Marino.
One other point I'd like to make, which I didn't make, is that Rob's position is a public safety position. It's as equally important as the police and fire. All three agencies work hand in hand. And I've been out there numerous times where we needed the DPW director at all hours in the night. So I, I just want people to understand that that's a public safety position. And it's a, it's a, it's a important wheel or a cog in the wheel for public safety.
Appreciate that. So do we have any other questions for them? Otherwise, I think, is there any other questions or any other items on the agenda, Madam Town Manager, for the DPW director?
No, and I thank Mr. Oliver for staying on for those as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now at at 7:20, 7:15, less close to the observed time on the agenda. We have the audit report from Powers and Sullivan. Now Sullivan, now I'm guessing and I'm just guessing here that the two people in suits are probably the ones who are going to be doing this. So I am going to unmute Mr. Saretti and Mr. Adsett. I'm going to ask the town manager and also I'm going to unmute our finance director. If somebody would take the intro of this topic and the intro of representatives from Powers and Sullivan, that would be great.
Maybe the finance director would want to give the introduction.
Aaron, it's you. There we go.
Either way is fine, but these gentlemen are from Powers and Sullivan, Frank Saretti and Ben Adsett. And they were the ones who were, who actually completed the town's FY20 audit. And they are going to make a presentation to the board.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Karen. And Mr. Chairman. Honorable Board of Selectmen, we appreciate the opportunity to be here to present the results of the FY20 audit of town. I'd like to thank the town manager, the finance director, treasurer collector, school business manager and the rest of the finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we received during the course of the audit. It was definitely a unique year for us. Pandemic, you know, hit right before we were scheduled to start our, our work, maybe like three months, three or four months before we were out here. Actually, with many of our clients, we pretty much, you know, we're trying to be as flexible as we could. And if there were clients that wanted us to do the audit completely remotely, we did that. If there were clients that wanted to do a hybrid approach and have us out in the field, partial part of the time, we did that. And in the case of the town, the town of Lunenburg, the finance team, finance director and town manager were comfortable with having our team out there for the entire audit. And so we're out there, wore masks, socially distanced. And to be honest with you, it really didn't affect the audit process, at least from our standpoint. And we felt that the audit went very smooth. Very similar to how it went in prior years, other than the fact that we were walking around wearing masks and trying to keep our distance from everybody as best we could. But we were very happy with the way things went and it was kind of an unknown how that was going to affect us this year, but the information flow was great. We got everything that we needed and there were no issues or anything like that. So we were actually out at town hall in early July to do our preliminary work. At that time, we're typically focused on auditing debt and the budget and auditing the grants, testing transactions. And we were able to do all of that stuff with no issues. Our year-end work was mid-October, so we were back out then to do our year-end field work, wrapping up any loose ends we might have had from our preliminary work, completing all of our year-end audit procedures and compiling the financial statements. So really it was kind of business as usual for us from that standpoint, being able to get everything done. The overall results of the audit were that we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the best we got. Means the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. All the reporting deadlines were met that we had established for getting the information that we needed to be able to do our work and get the audit done in a timely and efficient manner. We received timely responses to all of our inquiries for the audit. No delays holding things up. And there were no internal control issues that we No delays holding things up. And there were no internal control issues that we found while we were completing our work. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or anything like that, which we would have brought to your attention before this meeting if there were. So that's always good news to be able to report. From a financial highlight standpoint, town was able to maintain its AA plus credit rating with standard imports. You had $1.8 million of free cash that was certified as of June 30th, 2020. That was about a $700,000 increase over the prior year. Give the town more flexibility in terms of spending and funding different initiatives. The unassigned fund balance totaled $5.7 million. That was about 14% of the budget. That's increased since 2013, at which time you're at about $1.6 million. And that was about 6% of the budget. And the rating agencies for the AAA communities really like to see a minimum of 10%. So you're over that 10% threshold, which is great. So that is a very positive trend that that's been increasing like that, increasing like that since 2013. Your general stabilization fund also had $2 million in it at the end of the year. That has also steadily increased since 2013, when it was about $1 million. And again, that's another positive trends that the financial institutions look favorably upon. You also have a zoning stabilization fund that has $230,000 in it and a vehicle and equipment stabilization fund that had $946,000 in it. At the end of the year, that balance increased by about $300,000. So you're able to increase that reserve. And your collections, your real estate, personal property tax continue to be very strong at 97% of the commitment. It's a very good collection rate. You also received your final reimbursement payment for the middle slash high school construction project in 2020, about $1.3 million. You also borrowed another $675,000 to permanently fund the project and to close it out. So that project is now fully funded. And you'll see on the financial statements that the balance in the capital project fund comes down to zero. Your financial statements were also restated in 2020 due to the town, town meeting voting on May 4th, May 4th, 2019 to establish a PEG access cable TV fund. And so that activity has been taken out of the governmental funds and it's being reported as a proprietary fund. And you can see that as a separate column on page 20 through 22 of the financial statements. And you also incurred about $50,000 worth of expenditures related to the pandemic that are anticipated to be reimbursed through the coronavirus relief fund or through the federal emergency management agency. And those costs were first responder salaries, PPE, cleaning and disinfecting, and those types of costs that would be considered reimbursable under the guidelines issued by those agencies. General fund budgetary results, general fund increased by $809,000. Your revenues were $267,000 of a budget. That was mainly due to motor vehicle excise and tax liens. Your expenditures also came in $1.2 million under budget. And that was spread out across several of the different governmental functions. It wasn't anything in particular. And your encumbrances increased by $555,000. All of those things, those increases were offset by the use of $1.3 million of free cash. It was voted to fund the operating budget. These results, budgetary results indicate that you have a structurally sound budget and that you also have good budgetary controls in place. Your enterprise funds on a budgetary basis, which is how you maintain your books, the sewer operating fund ended the year with $1.4 million of fund balance. And that was about a $37,000 increase over the prior year. So your, your rates are, you know, covering your operating costs, sewer activities. Your solid waste recycling operations ended the year with a fund balance of $10,000. And that was a slight increase of about $900 from the prior year. And your PEG access cable TV enterprise fund ended the year with $489,000. And that was an increase of $119,000 over the prior year. Your net other post-employment benefits liability totaled $55.8 million. That was an increase of 3.3 million from the prior year. It's mainly due to service cost and interest and a decrease in your discount rate from 3.25% to 3%. The town also contributed another $151,000 in accordance with its OPEB funding policy. And the balance in the OPEB trust fund totaled $375,000 at the end of the year. And you also recorded about $12,000 worth of net investment income in the fund as well. Your net pension liability for the Worcester Regional Retirement System, and that covers town employees excluding teachers and other school administrators that are part of the mass teachers retirement system, had a net pension liability of $19.8 million. That's a decrease of about $100,000 from the prior year. And the system was 47% funded, which was an increase of 4% from the prior year. For debt, you had $1.3 million of short-term debt outstanding. $480,000 was to cover the fiscal '19 capital plan. And $782,000 was used to fund land acquisition for open space. And for long-term debt, you issued another $1.7 million of new debt. And as I mentioned, 675 was for the high school project and there was another million dollars for paving. Your general fund debt service is about 8.9% of your total appropriations. Your rating agencies, I think, would like to see that number a little bit lower. And typically, you know, somewhere closer to 5% is probably more of what they have in mind. But over the last seven years, your debt ratio has been as low as 6.8% and as high as 10.6%. So it is coming down. Which I think is something that the grading agencies had commented on. That was really what I wanted to highlight on the financial statements. The next report that we usually talk about is the report on federal awards. However, to qualify for that, you have to spend at least $750,000 in federal funds in a fiscal year. The town did not meet that threshold in fiscal 2020, and that was mainly because the expenditures on the school's Title I grant was down. It's expected that, well, those funds were carried forward and it's expected that they're going to be expended in fiscal '21. So we are expecting that you will need to have that audit of federal awards completed in fiscal 2021. So there's nothing to report as far as that report goes. And then that takes us to the management letter. And there were seven prior year comments in the management letter. Three of them were fully resolved. And then the other four, three of those are, has been significant process, progress made to resolve those other comments. Three, three that were resolved related to writing off old receivable balances for personal property and motor vehicle excise taxes, some supporting documentation related to the health insurance plans for marriage certificates and birth certificates. And this kind of came up due to the testing that we have to do related to the OPEB liability. But that has been resolved. And then there was another comment related to documenting administrative and financial functions. And the town has been able to secure a grant through the community compact agreement and for continuity of operations. That's going to help to document those key administrative functions. And it's our understanding that that was expected to be completed in FY21. I'm not sure with COVID and everything else, if that might be delayed, but it sounds like that's in process. And they're making some good progress on that. And then the other comments that are still in progress, the, as I said, significant progress was made on a comment related to old outstanding checks. And our recommendation really on that is to just develop a formalized policy, a formal written policy that sets up like milestones for when actions need to be taken by the treasurer to deal with these old outstanding checks. For instance, when a check has been uncashed for 60 days, do you contact the payee to find out why the check hasn't been cashed after 90 days? It's good practice to move the uncashed check from the outstanding checklist into what's called the tailings account. And once the outstanding checks go into the tailings account, there's then another process that you go through. Where you go through an advertising process and you either end up returning the funds to the payee through that process or after you've completed the necessary steps, the town can actually take these checks back in as a miscellaneous revenue. And again, there have been procedures put in place and there have been procedures that have been performed that have, you know, reduced these balances of old outstanding checks and have put some of the old outstanding checks into the tailings account. And that's a more, more secure account to keep them in. And so that's all great. But we still do recommend that the town document a formal, like written policy for when these actions should be taken and so that it's just a little bit more of a structured process, how often it should occur and what the milestones are for when these different steps and actions should be taken. There was another comment related to writing off uncollectible ambulance receivables. And back in 2019, there was a really significant balance that was written off, about 200,000 of the receivable. However, the balance with the third party administrator was $614,000 at the end of the year. And about 529,000 of that is greater than 180 days old. And so we're recommending that, you know, you just take a look at that balance. It's over 180 days old and try to determine how collectible it is, what's collectible, what isn't. And it may still be a significant amount of those receivables that can be written off. So we're just recommending that you analyze that balance. And the last comment relates to conducting a fraud risk assessment. And this is really just documenting where the different risks in the town are, where fraud can occur, and then taking a look at the controls that are in place that, you know, act to prevent the fraud from occurring. And then having that documented so that everyone can see it and agree to the assessment, whether the controls are sufficient and that you're happy with that level of risk. Or if you feel that additional controls should be put in place, this would give you the ability to be able to see here, this is where our risks are. These are the controls we have in place and we either feel they're sufficient or we don't. We want to do more or we're comfortable with what we have. But that's something that that fraud risk assessment should be documented. And that was everything that was in the management letter. So that's the end of my presentation, unless anyone has any questions.
Do you have a question? So there were no, if I heard correctly, there are no new issues that were noted in the management letter. So we're going.
That is correct. Okay. Yeah, there were no new comments that came up this year.
Okay. So then anybody who's listened to this or will listen to this, if they're not speaking financial and budgetary audit terms, I always ask you this directly. Is it fair to say that the town is, is in good financial position and it is run with strong management policies? Is that a fair statement?
That's a very fair statement. The financial position, as I mentioned in the presentation, has gotten stronger, I think, almost every year, but since like 2013. And your levels are, you know, at levels that the rating agencies consider to be healthy financial reserves. The internal controls, as you're highlighting, we didn't have any new current year comments. And in addition to that, the comments that are in the management letter are not things that we consider to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. They're more comments that are value added comments or, or things that we think that can help you to maybe strengthen some things and do some things a little better. But it's not something that we consider to be a significant deficiency in internal control or a material weakness or something like that. So yes, the, as I also mentioned, the books and records are in very good shape. We didn't have to propose any adjustments to correct any balances on the books. The ledgers are always closed out on a timely basis. You're, there are requirements for submitting a balance sheet and a year-end reporting package to the mass department of revenue, who then certifies the free cash. Yours is always done early. You always have that certification early on. And I know some clients that are still going through that process. So the books are always closed in a very timely manner. That's another very good sign that the reconciliations that you would expect to be occurring throughout the year are in fact happening, that you're able to close your books and have your books accurate, you know, that soon after year ends that, you know, we're in in October to do the audit. That's, you know, fairly soon after June 30th. And so, yeah, I would say that your financial condition and your financial policies and procedures are very strong and your systems are operating the way that you, you would expect them to and the way they're designed to.
Excellent. So first of all, I want to thank the finance director and the town manager and their teams for doing an outstanding job yet again in, not only in hearing this report, but in hearing the trends of the report, which are probably more important than the report itself in and of itself, to know that trends are heading all in the right direction. So I want to thank you and applaud you for, you and your teams for what you're doing. And then in the, in the, in the spirit of overachievement, which represents Lunenburg, aside from getting the debt service down to less than 10%, how do we achieve AAA rating? That's our next goal. How do we do that?
Are you, who's that question for?
Well, you're the one who deals with the financial agencies and the credit, the credit agencies.
I mean, I haven't actually seen your most recent rating report, but I did discuss it with Karen and she mentioned that the debt ratio was probably the biggest comment that they had in there, that they would like to see that come down. I think that they were pretty happy with your reserves and your financial policies and your, your financial team. Like they factor all that stuff into the rating. And that was the one thing that I'm aware of that was really highlighted. I don't know if Karen or Heather have anything else to add to that.
I don't have anything to add. I did talk a lot about this and I, well, at least from my perspective, that's what I see as the one negative in our rating. So I don't know if Heather has anything else that she wants to add, but that would be what I see.
No, I agree. It was our debt rating capacity. So that was the one factor that came up last when we went up for bond.
Well, with all these financial policies that are all in the positive and all strong, can we afford to get Karen a better microphone?
I hope so.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for either Mr. Saretti or the finance director or the town manager on this?
Yeah, I have a follow up.
A follow up? You didn't ask your first question yet.
Fall to your question.
Oh, okay. Hold on. Ms. Adams.
Sure. I was just going to say along what you said, it's very nice to sit here. I mean, I don't have a background in accounting and such, and so it's nice to sit here and get a good report and be thankful that we're in good hands. So thank you also to Heather and Karen.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, just, just our, just to confirm, is our policy 11% for debt?
It's four, seven, 11, right? Four, 11 and 14 combined.
Right. That's right, Heather.
So. Explain the numbers. Yeah.
So 4% non-excluded, right? And so combined 14 is excludable debt and non-excludable. Sorry.
So 5% may not be attainable goal for us.
Not with what we have going out for our, our debt right now, going out the next 30 years.
Was it S and P that you were dealing with or Moody's?
No, it's standard imports.
Yeah.
And did they tell you where they would like, what, where they would like to see it?
I think they just rated it, right? It was.
Said like exactly where they wanted it to be. They just rated us negatively because they thought ours was obviously too high.
I wonder if they'd be willing to, you know, give you a number that where they feel they would like to see it. At least that would give you like a target, you know, and you could determine if that's attainable or not. Because it might not be the 5%. It might be something. Like a target, you know, and you could determine if that's attainable or not, because it might not be the five percent, it might be something higher.
Thank you guys as well for the hard work that you guys do, for our community, for our town and. And, you know, hearing about the improved financial situation, which I think we all already know, but it's good to get that confirmation.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. We really appreciate the opportunity to, you know, be, you know, the independent auditors for the town, so.
And for best supporting role by an auditor, I want to thank Mr. Adsett for his support of this already here too. So that's moral support. Now, I I see that Passios, you have your hand up. I don't usually do this for these kind of reports. I'm going to make an exception. Please don't make me regret this decision. So I will ask you to ask your question.
Appreciate it, Mr. Chair. It's actually in regards to what you were just talking about, and that's the debt ratios. I was running those numbers through my head and I knew that our policy was fourteen combined. And and my question is that a committee in town is going to be reviewing our. Debt and financial policies starting in April to possibly make recommendations to leave it alone or make changes to the Board of Selectmen. And I'm I'm just wondering if Mr. Saretti. Could speak to if we were to tighten those numbers up. Would that help in the eyes of our rating or does the policy really not speak to that? Rather than the actual debt? If that makes sense.
And then the the rating report and Heather and Karen can tell me if I'm wrong, that. They look at like your financial policies and practices kind of as one rating area. And then I think they look at your debt ratio as like another separate like financial indicator. And so I think that is probably more of just the level that you're at versus what your policy is right now. But I think my recommendation would be to talk to S and P and just. Find out if they can give a little bit more detail about, you know, what it is, you know, where they would like to see it and what they're considering, you know, what they would consider to be. A good, strong like debt ratio for you to have.
Okay, as as a quick follow up to that. Lacking any comment on our policy other than they felt the policies were good, then. They really don't have a problem with what we've got in place now. It it's more that we're on the high side in the actuals. That a fair assessment.
My understanding of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Otherwise, I will thank Mr. Saretti, Mr. Adsett for for doing the audit and working with our team and providing a very professional report as always. Thank you for your hard work. Again, to the finance director and to the town manager, thank you and your teams for keeping us in good financial straits.
Well, thank you very much for having us here. It's a pleasure and appreciate the opportunity to present the results of the audit. And look forward to. The next audit, which is coming up very quickly.
Well, hopefully we'll see you in person at that point and it won't be with cameras.
Yes, that would be great.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have under interviews, appointments, reappointments and resignations. We have the resignation of the Nishoba Regional Dispatch Executive Director Ross Klune. Madam Town Manager, is there something you'd like to speak to to that?
Yeah, I can take that now. It's also in my town manager report. So Mr. Klune gave us written notice on March fifteenth. His last paid day will be April second, so this Friday. We have a administration board meeting, which I sit on that board tomorrow to discuss. The vacancy and how we're going to proceed with an acting position until the position is permanently built.
How long was Mr. Klune, the executive director there?
Um, let's see, he, two and a half years, I think it's been.
Did he give any reason for his departure?
He took another position actually in California, so he's relocating.
It's the place you ought to be, so I've heard. So. Okay, well, you'll keep us posted as that, those interviews happen.
I will.
Current business, a request to vote to revoke the fuel storage license or licenses located at four sixteen Electric Ave from Eileen Morosky. That is in our Google Drive. What is prompting this revoking of license?
There is a letter memo.
I'm sorry.
I can read the memo if you would like.
I can read it, that's fine. It's to the select board. From our executive assistant to the town manager, Lane Peterson, regarding the removal of fuel tanks from four sixteen Electric Ave. This office has been contacted by Fire Chief Sullivan and Mrs. Eileen Morosky, who have informed me that the four underground storage tanks. Three, which was a six thousand gallon gasoline and one eight thousand gallon diesel located at four sixteen Electric Ave have been removed. Tanks were removed by RJ Gervoni Construction Corporation on August, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty. So there is no longer. Fuel storage or sales on site. I'm requesting the board vote to revoke the fuel license permits for the property. So I can inform the Commonwealth of Mass and the DEP Bureau of Air and Waste Underground Storage Tank Program of the updated situation. So there answers that question. They are no longer there, so no one is storing fuel there. So this is a basically formality, so we can close the loop on this. Are there any questions about what we're about to do in this vote? No, so I would entertain a motion regarding the request to vote to revoke the fuel storage licenses located at four sixteen Electric Ave.
You got a question?
Yes.
Just the the request to revoke is coming from the property owner?
It's been contacted by both Fire Chief Sullivan. And the owner, both.
Okay, so the owner themselves are requesting.
Yeah, and if there's no tanks and there's nothing to store it, so even if they didn't, it makes sense.
Well, having the fuel license sometimes could be seen as a benefit to the property to like a future owner. So I was just making sure that the request was coming from the property owner.
But the the license itself is related to those specific tanks. So once removed, a new license would have to be applied for. Okay.
Okay, so I didn't entertain a motion from someone regarding this request to revoke the fuel storage license.
Motion to revoke the scoops, the fuel storage license.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Adams?
I.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
And an I for me, hereby unanimously revoked. The Animal Control Officer Quarterly Report. That again is also in our Google Drive. I don't know if anybody has any questions or anybody has any presentation to this. Seems pretty straightforward, seemed pretty straightforward to me. Anybody have any questions about it?
It's a very interesting read. You know, the only commonality I found was that there seemed to be a lot of issues with pit bulls in town. But otherwise, it seemed pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Well, I think you just get listed of a lot of things, calls for bears crossing the road to to. Looks to retrieve two Great Pyrenees dogs or, yeah, they certainly runs the gamut and assortment of calls, but. Let's just accept this into the log that we have received the quarterly report and we thank the police department and the animal control officer for providing these. Next, approval of minutes, March second, twenty twenty one. Did anybody have any revisions or changes? If not, I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes of March. Second, twenty twenty one.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for March second, twenty twenty one.
Of a second. Okay, all those in favor, Ms. Adams?
I.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
I for me, okay. Last week I went into town hall to sign the following warrants, an accounts payable warrant. In the amount of six hundred thirty three thousand, seven hundred sixty seven dollars and one cent. Payroll deduction warrant in the amount of seven hundred thirty six thousand, three hundred ninety eight dollars and seventy four cents. And a payroll warrant in the amount of eight hundred fifty six thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and thirty three cents. Any action items? Ms. Adams?
Sure, I just wanted to circle back to what I brought up in the board comment at the beginning, since we had the DPW director. But if we could, I don't know if town council would meet with us or just communicate with us regarding road ownership. My big concern with. The the water department expansion for people who haven't followed it, it was expanding the water district was turned down. And the developer still seeks to. To bring water to his eight acres that are in the district. Um, I think what's what's very important, what I would relay to you, to the town manager in regards to the town's. Responsibility in all this is just the amount of investment that's gone into the roads and in that area that that the, some of the roads. In the pavement moratorium, as you know, you, because I checked when I had emailed you about that a while back, but they. Still newly paved roads in good condition. Um, and so I guess I just want to know what our role is in this. In this situation, the developer, the annual water meeting was this past Saturday and he was there presenting that he would like to bring water to his eight acres. And there's some mentorship in town government and you get little pieces of information and there was somebody who told me that one of the most important things is always intent. If that rings a bell to anybody, and the intent of the developer. Is to bring to bring water to to this property that he already has approval for one hundred twenty homes. So he's giving a hypothetical that he's just bringing it to eight acres. And I don't want to see the town's roads damaged in the middle of all of this when ultimately. I don't think he's going to be allowed to run the water to the development. And so I'm just, I just want to be on the front end and be very proactive to protect the roads, the developers having big safe, you know, spray paint the gas lines and so. There seems to be a lot going on here and and at the end of the day, the roads belong to the town. We're supposed to protect them, what's in the best interest of the residents. And so I I keep bringing this topic up because I want to be sure that. We're assertive in the fact that that this is municipal space that's being dealt with. Um, and so if we could get it on our agenda or or get town council to weigh in and and better understand what the policies are, I mean, we have. Enormous policies in regards to be cutting down a tree. Scenic roads and everything, and we've seen that play out on our board. And if we don't have. Language or policies in regards to what our role is in road stewardship in these in these utility situations, then it's probably something we need to work on. So that we're we're a part of the conversation, so.
Well, we have a bylaw. That governs that. And there's a policy in the pavement management plan, which has to do with digging up roads. However. Even if they did, they have equipment that can repair roads today, just with technological advances where you wouldn't even know it was dug up. But anyways, the bylaw says that the Board of Selectmen or the town manager. Or the DPW director have jurisdiction over who digs up the roads. And typically, because we don't want to. Micromanage the DPW director because he's in control of the roads, we usually give those, make, he makes those decisions, not us. So it's in the bio, that's in the bylaw.
I I understand that, but I guess what I'm saying, and I guess we'll put it on the agenda so we can properly discuss it, is that there may come a point where. I I don't know, in regards to the citizens and and what they're asking for and I I. There there's, there's a lot going on with the topic. It probably belongs on our agenda and I I think there comes a. If we are stewards of the road, understanding at what point you 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 would intervene in the conversation on behalf of the residents.
Okay, anybody other, oh.
Subjective thing, because not everybody's against him putting houses up there. There's some.
I'm I'm speaking specifically to the water district expansion issues, and if you haven't been reading minutes watching the meetings or going to them. I'm speaking specifically on the water district expansion and that has been voted no. It has nothing development that's been approved. It has to do with water district issues and there are specific things that are happening. And residents are concerned and upset, and I'm just saying I'd like it on our agenda. I'd like to learn more about it and. Not based on opinion, but based on on fact, and there's that the the water district said no to the expansion, so that's that's a legal fact.
To the expansion of the district, yes.
Correct.
Was it a referendum or something or was it? Well, yeah, let's let's put this on the agenda. I'd love to have a discussion because that 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 project has already cost this town a ton of money in lawsuits. So let's do that again. So, yeah.
You're misunderstanding what I'm talking about and we're not on an agenda topic. I'm looking for, you know, action to be taken on this. He has permission to drill a hundred and twenty some odd wells. Ending the water district is a completely different topic.
Yeah, sounds like he's being stonewalled again is what it sounds like, and I think we ought to discuss it. Because I'm telling you right now, and really tired of this town spending money on lawsuits.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I think this is losing direction from. It it, it's not in line with the facts, what I'm trying to ask about the roads.
Anybody have any other action file issues?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple. So earlier today, I I sent the town manager a couple of asks, but I mean, I will. Follow up with Heather on 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 most of those things. The only, the only action item that I have is pollution. So, you know, when we go to Walmart, I know that we sent a letter over to Walmart. When we went, you know, you go to Walmart or Hannaford right now and you look to the right hand side. I mean, it's disgusting. It's embarrassing. It's gross. The amount of pollution that's all over. That's that's around commercial areas is excessive in my opinion. I know that coming out of winter, you have snow mounds, a lot of stuff gets picked up. So my question is, what is the enforcement mechanism that the town has to stop to require businesses to clean up their property?
Are you asking?
It's it's an action item, so we can follow up.
Okay.
But that's the, that's why, that's why I like to get some follow up on, because it's, I think it's pretty bad.
Okay. You said you had a couple of things.
The rest I will discuss with with the town manager.
Anybody else have any action items? I will say just for the record, since we did not pass any agreed upon new policy for appointments, we will be following the existing policy. For this coming season, because I don't see that happening bef- we're already into the our calendar of when we need these things happening, so. We're just going to follow what we have already and if we address this before the end of our fiscal year and we can get it under our belts, that's great, but it won't apply till next year at this point. Okay, committee reports, I will start by saying that the kind of a. Anti climatic, because I said that the capital planning committee met earlier this evening and approved the town manager's request to add the next two items. We have. An additional ninety eight thousand dollars that we're allotting toward capital plan that would enable us to put fifty thousand dollars for the Marshall Park Master Plan Design. And forty eight thousand dollars for the DPW truck that we spoke about earlier in this meeting with the DPW director. That is the extent of that report. We'll also be revising, or not revising, discussing next Tuesday what our. Policies may be, if we want to modify any policies about what qualifies as a capital plan, if we want to raise thresholds. Or change parameters, but we'll be looking at that and anything that comes out of that, any modification that comes out of that will be submitted to the finance committee for. And anything that comes out of that, any modification that comes out of that will be submitted to the finance committee for their review and approval. Any other committee reports? No. Okay, discussion on fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget, capital plan, we already talked about, financial forecast and the annual town meeting warrant articles. Uh, while the warrant article recommendations is on the next item. Uh, we'll talk about those, so we'll leave the actual vote for recommendations on here. So anything first on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget? Madam Town Manager, that you'd like to go over?
Um, yes, um, so making sure everyone has um understands the most up-to-date information um in the budget. So there were, um, as you are aware, there's certain articles, money articles that um are going to be in the budget, such as the sale of cemetery lots. Um, so that's additional revenue on the revenue side. Uh, that will go towards that article for fifteen thousand. There was identified unexpended capital that will go towards the capital plan. That amount is um one hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. We will be using uh free cash for the APR article for the Pierce property. That's the recommended source. That's sixty-five thousand five hundred. And um uh free cash, total free cash towards capital will be seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, as a reference, the unexpended amount will be one hundred and eleven two eighty-one. And from tax revenue will be seven forty-seven seven eighteen. The um there is one prior year invoice, which came up uh after our last meeting. That is for a hundred and forty-five dollars. That will, the source will be free cash as well. And the article for the special purpose stabilization, I'm recommending that we deposit two hundred and fifty thousand out of free cash into that account. That will bring us um within approximately ninety-three thousand from the um, there's two large capital projects going out for the fire department, one for a large uh fire engine purchase and one for a rescue truck. That um would enable us to, if we wanted to at that point, to pay for those two things without borrowing. On the expenditure side, we've previously talked about the changes to the health insurance budget, so I will um rehash that. The um there uh was an adjustment to the fire department budget for eight thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, there were the two uh vacancies that were filled where the FY twenty-two budget, the estimate was lower than what um is now needed because the two hires came in at a higher step due to their continuous service with the town. Uh, they were already on-call employees, so they came in higher than the step one. And the uh, there was an adjustment to the town clerk's salary for about fifteen hundred dollars, thousand dollars and five hundred and fifty dollars. And that um is for her salary adjustment for fiscal twenty-two.
You 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 thought, I didn't get the whole number because there was a hesitation. What's the actual number?
One thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
That's what it is.
Okay. And um, that's about all the updates on the budget. Uh, that um right now leaves us with um an unappropriated balance of tax revenue, about forty thousand. We still have our uh bids to come in for Casella, so that leaves an available source if those bids come in higher than the fifteen percent estimate that's used in the current budget. And um, we also.
What do those bids do?
April fourteenth. And um, it also leaves an unappropriated balance of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand in free cash. Um, so there are two money articles that we don't have. Um, we haven't made definitive uh votes on, one for the TCP additional design work and the other article the board will discuss tonight for the old primary school. So both of those would come out of free cash. And um, so though it's leaving that funding available, as well as my recommendation is to allow at least two hundred thousand out of that free cash number to fall towards next year. And we've done that in previous years and it assists our free cash number for the next year's budget and helps on things like capital.
Any questions about the budget or budget adjustments from the town manager as just told to us? Any questions about capital plan? Questions about financial forecast? Okay, so let's go on to our recommendations for the rest of the town meeting warrant articles. Madam Town Manager, which one is the best one of these? Is it the red line versions we should be looking at or that we're not? Which one should we be looking at?
Well, I included um the red line version, so you could see all the attorney, town council's comments. The clean version might be the easier version to to look at, if you want to see the final language.
Yeah, the clean version of the red line or the?
Yes, clean.
All right, let's look at the clean version. So everybody's looking at the same thing. Okay, we have voted on article one, we have voted on article two, we have not voted on article three. So, yeah, and I'm going to ask you, Madam Town Manager, to fill in numbers. Some of these you've already given us. So article three is the uh paying of prior year's expenses. That was a hundred and how much?
Hundred and forty-five dollars out of free cash.
Out of free cash. So that is the actual number.
Yeah.
So the way this is going to work is if there's a discussion, discuss. I can hardly believe there'd be a discussion about this, but I'll let it be said. And if not, somebody makes a motion to recommend approval or recommend disapproval and or defer, and then we vote on it. So so the motion is to uh about the article for paying the prior year expense as noted.
Big motion, how we uh pro- uh pro- recommend approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Right, roll call vote, Ms. Adams?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
All right, recommended approval. Article four. Uh, this is the budget, correct? Well, this is last year's budget. Well.
Current year's.
Yeah, the current year's budget, right? So what did, do we have a number for this?
There is um no known adjustments at this time, so I would recommend the board defer this till town meeting in case something does come up.
Any objection to deferring?
No.
No. Done. Okay, we're going to defer. Article five. The capital plan has now just amended uh, which comes to, what is the total on the capital plan? One million?
One million five hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I move to recommend approval of article five.
Second, okay, uh, let's go around the other way. Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Ms. Adams? And an eye for me, so unanimous. Six. Uh, this is the budget. This is the new budget. Do we have a final number?
The budget number is thirty-nine million seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
And that's including all the adjustments you just told us, right?
Yes, it does not include the enterprise, because those are under other articles.
Yep, yep.
I move to recommend approval of article six.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
Ms. Adams?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
And an eye for me. Article seven. Stabilization, do we have an actual number?
One hundred thousand.
One hundred thousand dollars into stabilization.
I'm going to recommend approval of article seven.
Okay, Ms. Adams?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
And an eye for me. Wow, it's going swimmingly. Article eight. The state special purpose stabilization fund, how much are we looking to put in there?
Two hundred and fifty thousand from free cash.
Two hundred and fifty from free cash.
Make a motion and recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Ms. Adams?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
And an eye for me. Nine we voted on, ten we voted on, eleven sewer enterprise fund, have they submitted?
Yes, um, so sewer, sorry. I'm getting shit because I'm going up for two different sheets. Final number was one million one hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars and ten cents.
I move to recommend approval of article eleven.
Okay.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Ms. Adams?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Me. Okay, that takes care of eleven, twelve we voted on, thirteen solid waste disposal. We don't have numbers for this, right?
We do. We're going to um keep it at the three hundred and two thousand. So DOR, um, they are looking at, as long as we have the at least that amount in receipts, in incoming receipts for that enterprise account. Um, so which we will um, with price of the pay-as-you-throw program goes up, we'll exceed that receipt because we'll have to raise the price of the bags to pay for the program.
Okay. But doesn't this? Oh, yes, this doesn't have to do with the recycling portion that you're reserving some money for.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. So the disposal one will pay for itself because if we have to raise price of bags, if they come in higher, okay, gotcha. And what is it? Three hundred and two thousand?
Three hundred and two thousand.
A motion?
I move to approve, recommend approval of article thirteen.
Okay, for a second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
Ms. Adams?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
An eye for me. All right, the dreaded water enterprise fund. Yes, do we have a number for this?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move to recommend.
Since I can remember.
I move to recommend approval.
All five customers. Okay, uh, Ms. Adams?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Eye for me. Uh the peg access for PAC TV. So that, what is their budget here?
One hundred and seventy-four thousand twenty-four dollars.
I move to recommend approval of article fifteen.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
Ms. Adams?
Hi.
An eye for me, sixteen we already approved. Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, we don't have the actual contracts, so we will defer. That makes sense. Does anybody have any objection unless somebody wants to agree to a contract we don't have?
No.
No.
Um so this is the article twenty is the old primary school, what we have put to put on. So this is where we need to assign a money amount to this for the design and and engineering to create this space, this passive recreation and open area space. So such a design, I mean, if we look at what was approved for the capital plan for Marshall Park, um, you know, for a design thing, we're looking at fifty thousand, I would probably put that as a placeholder. I mean, I think it'll be much less than that, but that would give us an upper limit uh of putting this design together.
I saw a bid for eighteen seven hundred.
Yeah, there was an email. I sent.
I I'd put twenty-five as the ceiling.
I agree with the member Jeffrey.
Okay, as long as we have enough.
So.
Okay.
So we have free cash.
Excuse me?
And the source would be free cash, just so you know where it's coming.
I move to recommend approval of article twenty.
With twenty-five thousand dollars.
With twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? I personally think it's too low, but I was going to go.
Yeah, I would, I have further discussion um in the sense I I I saw the email with the eighteen thousand. I think it would be good to come in low, but I also think it's uh, the, you know, eh, we don't have to use money that's approved. Um, and so I I I don't know if we're we're a little close to the amounts we saw in that having it be a little higher, I certainly would support having it, you know, as low as possible. And we already saw the figure of about eighteen thousand, but um, I don't know if if we're limiting ourselves there in a way that could um in Marshall Park, how many acres is Marshall Park?
Oh.
No, off the top of my head.
I don't either.
I mean, it's considerably a larger parcel, so um, you know, just in terms of engineering and.
Dave, if you're on, just type it in the chat, Dave. You don't have to put up your hand.
Frankly, twenty-five thousand gives us over a twenty percent contingency based on the quote. I think it's perfectly reasonable.
Well, typically.
Marshall Park is twenty-eight acres.
And we're dealing with about two and a half.
But but typically what happens is by the time you do these, these jobs are done, the price has gone up. Then we have to go back and look for more money. So it kind of gives you a little bit of a a cushion and we would, we only spend what the quote is, I, am I right?
Right, if um, if whatever article number is approved, if we don't any, unexpended amount can go towards future capital.
People feel comfortable with thirty, just so it's a Scoshire, but much less than Marshall Park.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with thirty.
Second.
All right, now we have thirty. Any further discussion?
Do we have thirty-five? No.
Yeah. I was going to do that, Jim, and I I held off, I held off. I was going to do my cattle call and invitation, but then it was like, yeah. All right, so thirty, uh, the notion's been made and seconded, so we're going to, where the motion on the table is to approve article twenty with thirty thousand dollars. All those, well, just a roll call vote. Mr. Dwyer?
Hi.
Ms. Adams?
Hi.
Mr. Marino?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries?
Hi.
And eye for me. Okay, twenty-one, we approved, twenty-two, we approved, twenty-three, approved.
But I just to point out that number on twenty-three, you'll notice it um, it's changed since last time. So Karen Broshu checked with DOR and our financial advisor. We don't have to vote the rescindment of um the money that we've received from MSBA would just be four million eight hundred and sixty-eight.
I was going to say, that looked like we were getting back a ton of money, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I I I didn't want to bring that up at at then, but I'm glad you clarified it. So we're still rescinding the rest of the borrowing. That was the responsibility of the town, so. Project still came in that low, so that's great, under but that much under budget, so that's great. Uh, we'll come back to twenty-four in a second because that's they're going to, that that has some discussion. Let's just try to look at the rest of them first. Twenty-five, we approved, twenty-six. So do we do we have a a number from the TCP design group about what they're looking for here?
We do not. They have a meeting next week.
All right, so then I think that I'm willing to defer to them to come up with a number before I can discuss it. So, Mr. Jeffries, you serve on that, on that committee, is 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 that, are they going to be proposing a number anytime soon?
We expect to have a number at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, so that, is anybody, is everybody okay with deferring this whole town meeting? Since I don't know what we're discussing otherwise, all right.
Yes.
So defer on twenty-six. So defer on twenty-six. Twenty-seven, the salary admin plan out, uh, what is the report from the from the Personnel Committee? Have they
They voted.
Come back to us with their, uh, idea about longevity? Did they remove it from this article?
Yes, they voted to, um, delete the section on longevity and just include what's right before you tonight on the positions. That's great.
All right, so they will revisit that for another town meeting sometime.
Yes.
Okay. So entertain a motion for Article twenty-seven. This is where they're basically, the Personnel Committee is adding uh, certain positions at grade levels to the salary admin plan.
I move to recommend approval for Article twenty-seven.
So a second.
Second.
Okay, a roll call. Mr. Jeffries.
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer.
Hi.
Mr. Marino.
Um, well, I'm sorry, I missed my opportunity to ask a question about this.
Oh, you can ask a question. This is a.
Well, what, I, why is a reserve officer in the salary admin plan?
There was no, um, nothing in the collective bargaining agreement or the S A P before for that position to fall in. So this gave it, um, somewhere to fall as far as a range.
What does that do to the salary, the present salary? They get top patrolmen's rate? Presently?
It's, um, I'd have to look back um, to see where it falls, but I believe it's within where they were.
Okay.
But I can look that up for you.
All right.
This is something, um, the H R Director worked with, um, Chief Gamal on to propose to the Personnel Committee, which they approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
Okay, so then we're up to you in the vote here.
Hi.
And Ms. Adams.
Hi.
And an eye for me. Twenty-eight. Uh, we already recommended approval, twenty-nine.
Hard, I think.
We deferred.
It's a question on twenty-nine.
Sure.
Um, my schedule conflicts with the planning board's schedule now. Um, but I do have a question about, um, eh, about parking for, um, the parking recommendations for office space. Uh, they note that uh, this change would then say, I believe, one space for every, uh, three hundred square feet. So my question, and this would probably need to go to Mr. Burning. If we look at the square footage of Town Hall and the square footage of Ritter Building, by that requirement, how many parking spaces does, is a town expected to have for our current building? I mean, I'd like to know before we regulate other entities, I think we need to make sure our own house is in order. So I'd like to know how we, how we stand with our own ability to comply with, with the bylaw.
I can ask the land use director that question.
Thank you.
My feeling is they'll probably be grandfathered in because if you already have something and these were changed, you, you're not asked to retroactively fit them, only if you redo them in some substantial way.
I would assume that as well, however, if there's a future use.
Right, I know, we should look at it, absolutely. Ms. Adams.
I was going to make the same comment that this is to apply to future projects. And so whether it's a current private business or municipal space, nobody's, um, going to be required to change their, their parking of an existing use.
Yeah, so, and I, but I think it's a good, it's a good exercise to know how much it would require anyway, so. Uh, so yes, if we any other questions about this one?
Okay.
Okay, thirty, the thirty and thirty-one, we recommended deferring. So those were citizen petition articles. So let's go back to twenty-four, which is the article regarding the Architectural Preservation District and Appeal Procedure, the language that's in there right now. It was submitted by, um, Mr. Jeffries. And, uh, now I don't know where mine is. It was supposed, I asked Elaine to put it in here. Did it not make it in here?
I saw it in the drive.
I didn't see it in the drive.
Alternative proposal, yes, it's a very zoning bylaw amendment, A P D alternative.
So if you have, if you can swap back and forth between them, they were, they're similar except on three points. And I will point out the three differences that I had with what was proposed. So the first clause, and we'll just go, I'll, I'll just try to break it down clause by clause. So the first clause, I, I had made no changes in there. So as an alternative, but not necessarily as a substitute for such an appeal. That's the same, uh, the way Mr. Jeffries had written his was, um, with respect to any building owned or leased by the town of Lunenburg or dedicated or to be dedicated to any municipal purpose. Um, in the one I proposed, I think it, I think that that was way too broad personally. And I think that it should be changed, or I would recommend an amendment that we change it to any building or property owned by the town. Just straightforward, anything that the town owns, that's really what would apply. Uh, I'll, I'll go through all three and then we can come back to them. The second part is, um, on Mr. Jeffrey's original in the draft article. It said, "A party aggrieved by the A P D C's denial of a certificate to alter the same may." So the party being, leaving it open to anyone, anybody could propose an article. And in mine, I think if we're gonna override the decision of a board that this town created and a jurisdiction that it created, it has to be very limited in who can ask for such special dispensation. And I don't think it should come from a citizen petition or anything. I think it, on behalf of the town, it should come from the Lunenburg Select Board, especially insofar as the Lunenburg Select Board would be the one who would be asking for any certificate to alter anyway. So it should rest with the board on behalf of the town and only with the board. So that's number two. And then number three is the period in which can happen, uh, in the draft article. It says within six months of said action. And I would say no earlier than three months after and no later than twelve months after. So again, there's gotta be a time when, my reasoning for that is it's gotta be a time when we can try to negotiate and discuss with the A P D C about making any kind of changes or modifications and what's being proposed and trying to meet with them and come to a decision without having to do this. This is a, a means of, or a mode of last resort. And the reason why this is bringing brought up, and Mr. Jeffries and I certainly agree on this because we've said it in other places, is that the current situation with the A P D C and their bylaw, any, any person or, or body that has a decision ruled against them has an appeal process that's available in the court of law. Well, if, if I was a landowner, a property owner, not the town, I could appeal that to court and I could go to court and I could appeal the decision against the town. In this case, we would basically be suing ourselves. One entity of the town would be suing another body of the town. And we're looking to obviously avoid that, that awkward position. Uh, which is why it's only limited to town properties and why I think it, I put in the other safeguards to say that it's only limited by the Board of Selectmen and only within that timeframe. So those are the issues that I have, you know, countered with as possible, um, modifications. And I will just leave it at that. Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, so I agree with, um, the first and the last modification. I think that narrowing the scope of, um, within that first clause to just a building or property owned by the town of Lunenburg, although I can envision circumstances, um, and which is why the language was initially broad, although I can envision circumstances and when someone may want to donate land to the town and as a, you know, prior to doing so, may want to tear down a building on it. Uh, I do think that it's necessary to limit that scope, so I support that change. You know, at the very end, I think it's important, the town always has the option to sue itself. Or, you know, I, realistically, this board decides if we're gonna do these lawsuits. And I can't imagine that this board, a select board would ever decide to fund two sides of a lawsuit. Um, so, you know, uh, but I, I think their response though needs to be expedient. And so I think that this change to, um, setting a, a kind of a time limit of three months that gives the town time to reeval, reevaluate, uh, the issue. But also by having that twelve-month requirement limit, it says it must be an expedient process. I think where Tom and I disagree on is the town of Lunenburg. And my opinion, I think that this needs to be very broad, um, to, to, to kind of just step back from it a little bit. Only the Select Board on behalf of the town can go to A P D anyway to ask for some kind of process that they can then deny. So the Select Board is already involved in that process to trigger any kind of denial from A P D. Now, if A P D, uh, the A P D C decides to deny a project, the Select Board can then decide not to pursue it any further. And what I would like is for, to make sure that we have the option that if any other resident in town, you know, maybe the majority of this board does not represent the majority of the town. And so I think it gives us the option of saying, if there's someone else in town, if the Select Board decides not to pursue it any further, but someone else wants to pursue this further, then we still have that option to do so. And that's why I think rather than limiting it to town of Lunenburg, it should still say, uh, you know, any party agreed.
Ms. Adams.
Um, sure, this article, um, is, uh, and I, I understand it in one respect, but it's concerning to me in another. So, you know, we've identified a, a possible very positive future use of a parcel of land in town center, which would require the demolition of old primary. Um, I certainly think it's probably the municipal building in the worst condition. It's not inhabitable, the other ones are. So we've talked a lot about that. And so we would need cooperation to move forward on a positive use of the land if it didn't include the building. Although I appreciate why the A P D C was created to have pause to say, but we're here to support the building and then all the conversation that rises out of that. Uh, for example, recently I had conversations, um, uh, with some people about should we do engineering study of that building as a serious contender for Town Hall? Maybe, you know, and, and so is having them there to, to shed light on defending the building while I'm saying I want to use the land and I, I present an idea and they're present. Is that dialogue going to maybe lead to something healthy? Is that why A P D C's there? Do we want to circumvent, um, their control? So that's specific to old primary, which is where this all surfaced. But there's, I always like to, um, weigh, weigh in my mind unintended consequences of a change. Because a lot of thought is put into when something is created. Well, what is the unintended consequence of creating it? Well, we're seeing that here. We're struggling to make changes with our own buildings. But what is the unintended consequence of changing it? We may inadvertently, a different board a few years from now will have the ability to, uh, very quickly get rid of Town Hall or, you know, knock down something else. And so the, this was, this is here to protect the buildings and, and give like an extra layer around the, I guess, the, the private and municipal cornerstones of, of the, of that district. So if we make it easier to knock down old primary, we, we make it easier to knock down all of our municipal buildings and they may need some protection from something someday.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, I, I think that there's a process of due diligence that I expect this board and any future board to undergo. You know, the A P D, when we met with them, they had some questions about the efforts we've taken to be able to reuse that, the property. My opinion is before this board should ever go to town and ask to tear it down, that we need to act, we need to explore that, um, and explore all those possible options and possible uses today uh, for that building. You know, I, I think that the, wh- what, so like now is what you just said, I, I don't, I don't know if, if your comment fully addresses, um, what this is trying to resolve. Because I don't think that this precludes that process from occurring. In fact, A P D requires that process to occur, that, you know, this board must go through the same processes everybody else who has property in the A P D. I think the difference is that the town is differently situated than everybody else. And that if the, if anyone else wants to, you know, doesn't agree with A P D and wants to sue them, they can. This town doesn't realistically have that option. Uh, let's say that, let's say that this board were to disagree with A P D. And we say, let's just do it anyway. A P D can't stop us. I mean, it would have to be our own moral conscience that steps in that says, they made a decision, we're not gonna, we're not just gonna do it anyway. Um, and, and so I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, this is trying to resolve that impasse of wasting money on both sides of the lawsuit and saying, hey, if we get to this circumstance, let's, let's use town meeting as the mechanism to resolve this. And maybe the result is that the town says no. I mean, the same town that, that created A P D, you know, presumably, you know, um, is the same town that's gonna be voting on this. I think we all want to protect buildings, but we don't want to waste our money suing ourselves in the process. And I think that's all, that all, that's all that we're trying to resolve.
Yeah, I, I think that the, uh, we all received, uh, a letter from a, a resident in email regarding this. There was two art, two subjects in the email, but one, this article was one of them that arguably is not, not solely, there are some privately owned properties that are of historical importance in town in the, in the district, but a lot of them are the, the town's buildings. And so therefore we have to really tread with extreme caution. And I, while I came to a different conclusion than the writer of that email, I do think that the way you tread cautiously is first of all, you have to limit how it can be done and who can request it, which is why I, I, if it's the Board of Selectmen who could ask for the change and only the board can ask for a certificate to alter, it only makes sense that they should be the only ones who can ask for an overrule of a town meeting article. And, and believe me, in my view, this has got to be used very, very sparingly. In this case, we're at an impasse because we have a building that's been vacant for fifteen some odd years. And there's an impasse, there's, there's reluctance on the board and there's a reluctance on the town to spend money to fix up a structural envelope. Uh, because there are people who believe that it's not worth, worth it to put that money into it. And the A P D C is saying, well, you're, you're, this is demolition by neglect because you're not taking care of the building. And they can't make the town meeting spend money on a property they don't want to spend money on. And we can't make them change their mind. And so we're at this in, in impasse. And without any option out of it, personally, I think that this could go on for several more years. And I don't know that the town is, you know, the townspeople want that. I think there's gotta be a resolution to this somehow. And I just, I just don't see that any other way than offering an article of this nature. But the article's nature and the powers that it presents have to be used really, really judiciously and carefully. They cannot, I believe, we cannot have a citizen petition saying, oh, the Board of Selectmen won't do this. I, as a citizen, want this to happen. I, I think that's, that's not an appropriate use of this kind of power. By the same token, I don't think an appointed board should have that much power over stopping a town from developing and, and choosing the direction of the future of properties that they own. So that's where I stand on, on the article. Ms. Adams.
Sure, and I think in regards to, um, what you just said, one of the, the most important nuances that sort of arose in conversation is, is to preserve the building. Um, it comes up that they recommend potentially selling it. But when it comes to municipal parcels, the land may be very, very important to the town. And so there is this situation where, you know, saying, well, then sell a building. Well, if, if that means losing a parcel of land, that's integral to, you know, future use of, of, of town center, future use of schools or, or any municipal entity, that the land really needs to, um, seen as something that's important to the town. And, um, I feel like the, the buildings in, in these. And um, I feel like the, the buildings in, in these conversations is given more rights than the land. And I'm more of a land preservationist. I, not to be crass at all, but I mean, an old school was preserved in Pittsburgh. And very recently, that whole building was lost because somebody exploded it. So as much as you can focus on saving a building and as much as I love preservation and history of buildings, the only thing that's there, you know, time and time again, is the land itself. That site is seen other schools, the center school and, and so um, I think when it, to me, what I always circle back to is, is the necessity of land and the preservation of land. And where is the land's rights above the building? If the outcome for the building means s- s- the sale of it keeps getting recommended and conveyance keeps getting turned down by the people, we really are at a crossroad where, where we don't want to have what we've had happen for years, which is nothing.
Mr. Dwyer.
Um, just want to weigh in. Um, I, I support the article for the reasons uh, eloquently enumerated by uh, member Jeffries. Um, I, I don't really need to elaborate on, I, I don't share your concerns on it. Uh, uh, Mr. Alonso regarding uh, um, I, I, I just don't see a great potential for this particular uh, article to be abused. I mean, it's, it's, I think it'd be very rare. Um, but I do think it is necessary to uh, resolve the impasse. So that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may recommend that we just, you know, there's three clauses that we're looking to change. If we may just go through those clauses and each one individually maybe and vote on them.
Sure.
So we can do that without objection. So the first clause is as uh, as written uh, in the draft article was uh, with respect to any building owned or leased by the town of Lunenburg or dedicated or to be dedicated to any municipal use. And the alternative is with respect to any building or property owned by the town of Lunenburg.
So I move to alter the language to uh, state with respect to any building or property owned by the town of Lunenburg.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on that clause? Okay, all those, well, we, I'm just gonna go through, I'm not gonna object, I'm not gonna go through all of these. Well, but I guess we should, no, we should. So uh, if that's a motion and a second, then let's, Mr. Dwyer, let's just take a, a little. Mr. Marino.
Hi.
Ms. Adams.
Uh, we're voting on.
Just one clause.
Edits to pieces of it.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so I would, I would support heading in that direction. That edit makes sense to me, so I.
Okay, Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
An aye for me, okay. Uh, the second one is a party aggrieved by the APDC's denial of a certificate to alter the same or the Lunenburg Select Board on behalf of the town of Lunenburg being aggrieved by the APD's denial of a certificate to alter the same.
So I'm, I move to keep the language as originally presented.
I, I would all, I, I just want to bring up one point and we don't have Adam here. Can a citizen be, i- is, is a citizen a party aggrieved? Do you, I mean, that, I, I have question about the wording even in general. I don't know.
Can I? Sorry.
Is it, go ahead, man, it's our manager.
Um, I was gonna interject us in what we did. I did send, have a lane, send this to town council for review. We received it today. I can read his email.
Uh, since it will inform our discussion, I presume.
Okay. Um, so legally, the revisions are acceptable, like link uh, language wise. There are some nuances um, comparing the version that was drafted. Uh, the original version versus uh, the version that was submitted by Chairman Alonso. For example, first, the version, the first version is more expansive in its application. It applies not only to buildings owned, but also leased by the town of Lunenburg, as well as to those dedicated to any municipal use. Second version says property, not just building, but requires town ownership. I presume that includes properties owned by town entities. I, E.G. the, in the care, custody and control boards or commissions other than the select board. But it might be unclear whether it includes school committee properties. Second, my version, uh, the original version gives any person aggrieved a right of appeal. Whereas Tom's uh, extend that right only to the select board. And finally, the second version, Tom's version prohibits appeals to the annual town meeting or special town meeting within three months of the APDC's denial, but extends the appeal period to twelve months in total. The original version allows these appeals to be pursued immediately, but only for a period of six months. Of course, reapplication can just be made to restart the clock, so to speak. Either amendment is lawful in town council's opinion and it differs the select board concerning which of them is advanced.
Okay. All right. So that's the opinion from town council. So he doesn't, obviously, they're both legal and it's just a matter of who we allot. The, you know, the certain pieces too. So we already voted on one. We're talking about the second piece, which is allowing anybody, and I would, I still question a party agrees, can a citizen can, can, can they make the, the claim that they were aggrieved as a citizen by like a, a building not being able to be demolished? I mean, it seems odd that they would be a party. Uh, but I, I assume that Adam has taken that into consideration. So it's either you open it up to everybody or you limit who can make this article to the board of selecting. I, I made by my statement of why I chose that, but it's up to the board. And I think that, Mr. Mr. Jeffries, you made a motion, right?
I did. I made a motion, I was second, and I think we're voting.
Okay, so this is on keeping it as anybody can do this.
Well, as anybody can file the appeal that only the select board can get to the process of getting.
Well, this only has to do, this whole section only has to do with appeal, so. Okay, Mr. Dwyer.
Hi.
Mr. Marino.
Hi.
Ms. Adams.
Yeah.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And a no for me. The last part. In the original, it said within six months of said action. And in the, my alternate is after a period no earlier than three months and no later than twelve months after said action. So it gives a cooling off period where things can be considered and it gives an end time. And Mr. Jeffries, it has to be done, it can be done the next day. Uh, presumably, or up to six months.
I move to uh, approve the language as proposed by selectman Alonso.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Hi.
Ms. Adams.
Hi.
And Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And a, aye for me. All right. So now on the whole article as it sits. Uh, if you want, I will bounce back and forth and read it in its entirety. As an alternative, but not necessarily as a substitute for such an appeal, with respect to any building or property owned by the town of Lunenburg, a party aggrieved by the APDC's denial of a certificate to alter the same may after, uh, after a period no earlier than three months and no later than twelve months after said action, petition any annual or special town meeting to by majority vote override the same if deemed to be in the public interest. That is the entire article.
Or take any other action relative there too.
Well, that's not, you don't say that as part of the, so. Uh, that would be the entire motion.
All right.
So now let's vote, we can vote on that.
I move to recommend approval of Article twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion?
Sure. For further discussion, um, I completely understand the intent of this and even appreciate um, uh, board member Jeffrey's efforts here because we've had old area as a goal and, you know, I, I believe in the future use of, of, of that land and space. Um, I'm going to say no now because I have to read this over a few times and fully ponder um, the overall impact of the article, but it's, it's, I, I don't say no with negativity towards the efforts because I, I really do appreciate them.
Well, you could abstain too, so.
Yeah, maybe that's the easy way out.
Well, it doesn't sound like you're a real no. You're just saying, I'm just offering, so.
Yeah, no, thank you for that offering. It, I think I will abstain from it because it's, I, I totally understand its intent and appreciate that we absolutely want to improve the, the, the safety and the functioning of a municipal parcel and, and um, and I, I think there's a lot of good that can come from being able to, to do that. So, thank you for the recommendation to abstain.
Okay, so we had a second and we had the, uh, we had a motion, we had a second. So let's, let's go around. Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Ms. Adams.
I will abstain.
Mr. Marino.
Hi.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
And an aye for me. Now, in all disclosure, I may offer an amendment on the floor about that second section. I just want to be fair and honest about it because I feel strongly about it, not strongly enough that I don't want to put it on the warrant and not strongly enough that I don't recommend approval because we need something. But I do think that the town should vote on, on that piece. Uh, and I may, I may, I may not. I just want to offer that so people aren't surprised, that's all.
Surprise.
That is, that is every, that is every article, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And it's nine oh two, unbelievable. So um, town manager, uh, oh no, we have to vote to sign the annual town meeting warrant. So this is the warrant that we, we just went through. I would entertain a motion that we approve the, the, the assigning of the warrant.
Sure, I would make a motion that we approve the signing of uh, this year's warrant, but for May first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Hi.
Ms. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for me and a vote to sign the annual town election warrant, which should be in our Google Drive, the election warrant.
I had a, I had a question on the election warrant. Um, and I, I didn't realize it until tonight when I, when I looked at this. And the end of the, and I'm not sure if this is just our normal legalese, at the very beginning of this, uh, when it says, I see to meet in the Thomas C. Passil's building in said Lunenburg on Saturday, the fifteenth day of May next. Is, is that, I, I'm, I'm not familiar with that phrase next afterwards. Is that just referring to the upcoming May?
Yeah, the next, the next May on the calendar, which is two months, yes.
Got it, okay. That was it.
That's the way constables speak, by the way, that's why.
And I have a, a, a question for the town manager. It may be a question for the town clerk. Um, terms of, of prior to, uh, when are the ballots printed?
Where are they printed?
Oh, when.
Oh, when, um, I would have to find that data.
So the reason I ask is something brought up um, in, in the past, the language on it, and I don't know who, who creates the language, but for something like this year, um, let's say, uh, board of health member. And I, I don't even think we have enough people on the ballot, but you know, let's say there's two people on the ballot for board of health. The language on the ballot says vote for two. And it was felt that it should say vote for up to two. Because it's directing you to vote for more than you have to. And I don't know, I don't know who makes the language on it, but it, it changes the way people approach the ballot. So if something says vote for two, okay, one, two. Um, vote for up to two, oh, I can vote for just one. So the, the language of vote for two, um, I don't know where that comes from.
It's probably standard that comes from the Secretary of State's office through the elections division.
Okay.
And believe me, there's enough blanks that nobody takes that as a, as enforceable instruction, so don't worry. Okay, do I have a motion regarding the annual town election warrant and ability to sign it?
We sign the annual uh, twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-one uh, election warrant.
Hold on a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, do we need to physically sign this one or is this a docu-sign?
This would need to be physically signed.
Okay. And we, we, we would need to do that, what, tomorrow?
Uh, no, this just needed to, obviously, this is gonna go in the annual town meeting booklet, which is done this week. So it needs to be done tonight, the selectmen's meeting. Um, and it's printed as such, but we'll contact you as far as when you'll need to get.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Marino.
Hi.
Ms. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for me. Okay, that takes care of that. We are up to town manager report and the, of course, the ever-present COVID nineteen update.
I'll start with uh, COVID nineteen updates, very short, thank, it's just the number of cases reported from the board of health. There, as of March nineteenth, there were six hundred and seventy-three positive cases and, and the report was, uh, that was issued on March twenty-sixth, was six hundred and ninety-two. The state report showed six hundred and fifty-four cases as, as of March sixteenth and six hundred and fifty-eight cases as of March twenty-third. And there's been one death in town since the related to COVID. And this is an increase of nineteen cases from the March nineteenth report. Moving on to the town managers' report.
On, hold on, I think we have a question. Ms. Adams has a question.
Oh, just COVID-related, um, uh, it came to my mind just now, maybe it could have even been a, a board comment at the beginning. But starting Monday, the Lunenburg schools are open five days a week. So I think people will see a lot of changes, um, you know, in traffic patterns, congestion at the schools. We've all adapted to sort of a, a, you know, fifty percent functioning. They're closed on Mondays, no school buses on Mondays in town at all this whole year. So um, starting um, next week, just, you know, everybody can probably anticipate a lot of changes in the routines around town as we adjust to five full days.
Right, thank you for bringing that up. Moving on to the existing vacancies, there is one vacancy on the Architectural Preservation District Commission. Four vacancies on the Bylaw Review Committee, one vacancy in the Cultural Council, two vacancies on the Green Communities Task Force, one vacancy on Historical Commission, two vacant positions on the Housing Authority, one vacancy on the TCP Building Design Committee, one vacancy on the Senior Workoff Program Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. People that are interested in serving on any of those committees can fill out a form, application form on the town website and return them to the select board's office. An update on the earmark for the primary school fire alarm upgrade system. I received a copy of the formal request that was made by Representative Chris Merrick to the House and Senate Chairs of the Ways and Means Committees uh, for both those, the House and Senate, to include the fiscal twenty-one state budget earmark for the twenty-five thousand dollars that was allotted in the state budget during fiscal twenty-one for the primary school fire alarm upgrade project in the end of year supplemental state budget bill. If included, this allows the funds to be carried over to fiscal twenty-two. Update on the old primary school property and related to the design. The Monty Tech students should have preliminary drawings by next week. If these are done in time for the April thirteenth meeting, they will be presented to the board at that time. I already gave the board an update on the resignation of the executive director from the Nishoba Regional Dispatch Center. Update on invitation for bids that are currently out. We've received seven bids for cleaning services facilities and we interviewed the lowest, most responsible built bidder, Dynamic Janitorial Services on March seventeenth. Notice of award. Notice of award was issued to them on March eighteenth, and they will take over cleaning services on April second. Bids for the work for the Complete Streets project are due this Thursday, April first. Assistant Town Manager issued the request for proposals for the trash and recycling services on March eighteenth. And bids are due April fourteenth. Bids for landscaping services for town properties I do on April fifteenth. The invitation for bids for the Public Safety Carpet and Library Carpet Projects, both Fiscal Twenty-One capital plan projects. Are anticipated to go out to bid in the next couple of weeks.
Should we really be opening bids on April Fool's Day? An inappropriate thing, time to do this. Okay.
Nine twenty-five Mass Ave, an update on that. After a meeting with Mass Development and the consultant from Beta Group that performed the Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment. Mass Development outlined what we would need in order to make this site eligible for Brownfields Recoverable Grant through Mass Development. That is the grant that I applied for this past September. Mass Development advised we should find interested parties that would want to purchase the property. So they would know that the property will ultimately be redeveloped, reused. This will require us to put out a request for, for interest, which will not bind the town to any party. But will gauge interest on potential buyers and the type of use for the property. Secondly, we will need to take ownership of the property in order to be eligible for this recoverable grant. The process we have taken over the last two years has been to identify all the known hazards and the extent of the cleanup. The Phase Three Environmental Site Assessment that the Beta Group is currently working on. Will outline the cost to remove the underground tanks, the old septic system, remove the pump tanks. And piping, related piping to the pump tanks. A contingency for any soil contamination that would need to be removed, and abatement of the hazardous material from the building structure. And those, that's how we would identify what we'd need to apply for from Mass Development. We should have this estimate from the Beta Group in a couple of weeks. Property has been in tax title since two thousand and five, and we have kept current with the process with the eventual goal of foreclosing on the property. At a point when we knew we would not be liable for the cost of cleanup. Mass DEP regulations allow municipalities to take properties for back taxes and be exempt from cost of cleanup. As long as there are no imminent hazards. Based on the Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment, there are contaminants, but none that would be considered an imminent hazard. I have a meeting with DEP's Regional Brownfield Coordinator, the consultant from the Beta Group. Mass Development and MRPC on March thirty-first. As a preliminary step in the process, we will be having a survey conducted to identify the meets and bounds the property. And in the end, after the cleanup work is done, and the town sells the property. There will be a deed restriction that identifies the property, that the property may have residual contaminated soil. And it would need to be managed if any construction were to occur.
Yeah, very thorough, yes.
Who's the current owner of the property?
L and M Service Center.
So they're still listed as the, I thought it was, so it's not being called, okay.
Just also, an update on that, related to my goal, I met with the Planning Board last week. That's to discuss what their preference would be to provide their input on whether. A, the property should be put out for tax title. Foreclosure process, when auction, or an RFP. I gave them a lot of information that night, so I think they're digesting it, and will, will be a future agenda topic for the Planning Board.
Okay, excellent.
And last, just announcement, the Green Communities Task Force has meeting tomorrow night at seven P.M. through Zoom.
I will say on the previous subject, I, I'm actually a little bit surprised to find out that there is a way for municipalities to take properties. And not be liable, because that was the question that has been asked probably for, I don't know, seven years, eight years. So it's kind of odd that this, unless this is a new. A new development from Mass Development, that this became available, but you would think that this would have been available a long time ago.
It's the imminent hazards definition is where it come, where that deviation is. If there was something like. Indoor air quality that would affect, that would create a hazard to anyone occupying that building. That we knew, that would, then we would be liable for that. And that's why we've gone through the extent of doing these different environmental site assessments.
I appreciate all the work, I know this has been a very tedious and, and ongoing and long, long planned event. That takes a lot of management, maybe not every day, but it keeps coming up, and you gotta make sure it's rolling along.
Yeah, no, but very worthwhile project, I think.
Okay, any other questions for the Town Manager on those two reports?
Oh, I have a very strange question, what is the age of that structure, and is it protected?
Yes, it would fall under APDC, so it would be protected structure. And we would have to go through that if anything to the exterior of the building needed to be altered.
Okay, so very, that's another layer of complexity to whoever buys it, it's a protected building.
Right.
Well, it's, it's in a protected district, it's not, only the APDC can determine if it's a protected building. We don't know that, it's just, if the property is in the zone, that has to be reviewed by them.
Well, that, that in and of itself means it's under protection of them.
Okay, we have, oh, by the way, before we, Town Manager, on your own evaluation timeline, by this Friday. At least according to the timeline you submitted, you will have your evaluation. I'm sure it will be gift wrapped, ready for us to read. In the meantime, I would recommend that everybody start on their own and follow that deadline. So that we make sure we keep this going, and I think by mid-April, everybody's supposed, everybody should have met with the Town Manager. Read her review, and then had their meetings, and then submitted. I mean, everybody has the timeline, I'm not looking at it directly, but sometime by the end of April, everybody should have submitted to me. Their final evaluations, so that I can draft the composite. Let's just make sure we keep that going. Upcoming meetings, we have a meeting for the next three Tuesdays, April sixth, April thirteenth, April twentieth. And. And then, of course, May first is the town meeting, so we don't have a meeting on the Tuesday before town meeting, it's the last Tuesday of the month. And public comment from the public, Mr. Passios is already ready, hand up, video on, impressive. But your video, hold on. Your audio's not on.
There we are, now we got it, Dave Passios, fifty-six Whiting Street, coming to you at this moment as the Vice Chair of the Parks Commission. We had a meeting last night, which I chaired for the first time on Zoom, which was an interesting experience. And I, we survived it. Just like to announce that the Rec Director has posted the Spring and Summer. Programming brochure, so those programs are up, and the spring events are open to. Residents through tonight, and open to the general public starting tomorrow. Also, the Parks Department is interviewing for summer employment. For lifeguards at the town beach, so that will be an ongoing process until we fill all the positions. And the culmination of that, of course, is to bring those nominees through the Town Manager. To the Board of Selectmen for final hiring. The site to go for, go to, to see those brochures and information about the hiring is lunenburgmass.myrec.com. And there are links from those brochures to all of the information that you'll see there, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Any other public comment from the public? Any, any final public comment from the board this evening? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I didn't have a public call, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, we'll rewind this back to public comment from the board.
Yeah, we, we moved a little quicker past Community Action Reports, so I figured I would just circle back to it. For community reports, I met with MPO, MPO had a meeting on the seventeenth. And most of, the big ticket agenda item there was lengthy meeting, we were going over the agenda. The budget for the upcoming like ten years, but the main, the main item that was discussed was the bike trail. Or rather, the economic trail, as they call them, that's being built between Fitchburg and Limminster, downtown Fitchburg to downtown Limminster. There were funds allocated for that product to move forward this fiscal year, but the product is only twenty-five percent planned. So we voted to, to postpone that project for three more years. So that way, there's more, let me rephrase that, we didn't, we didn't vote to postpone it for three years. There was a recommendation for it to be postponed for three years, we decided not to do that. But to take it off of the calendar for this year, to allow for there to be more. Planning, so that way it can come back on the calendar next year. The Mayor of Fitchburg and the Mayor of Limminster both, as well as all of our congressional delegation for Fitchburg and Limminster. Are all in favor of the project, I think everyone at MPO supports the project, but, you know, project that's not ready to go, just isn't ready to go. So that was, that was a big item there, we did have a meeting as well with the TCP Design Committee meeting. It was mostly a debrief of the meeting that we had with the Select Board, and then to outline the costs that we. Are expecting to receive at the upcoming meeting next week.
Thank you. Okay, now I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. Hold on a second. Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Marino. Mr. Jeffries. Mr. Dwyer. Ms. Adams. And I for myself, good night, everyone, see you next week, in the meantime, take care of yourselves, take care of each other.